We'll go ahead and get started with tonight's work session. First item on tonight's work session will be the City Health Plan Quarterly Performance Review presented by Regions. If I could ask you to come up to the table, please.
You want me to set Jack?
That's up to you. You're probably ready to run after Jimmy is still answering or asking you questions.
And you know Desmond, of course?
Yes.
I don't know if this mic is live, but I don't think I need it.
Well, it's for the live streaming, so yeah, I would use it.
Okay. I have 12 copies here, and I've already given Mr. Henson one. Mayor?
Thank you.
There you go. And hold on, I hope I didn't give my marked up copy. Yeah, let's see if that one's going. Yes. Good deal. There you go. How much time do we have?
Oh, I'd like you to keep it about 10 or 15 minutes if you can. I know that's not a lot of time. We've got a pretty full agenda.
I can easily do that, and I'm going to hit the high points, and I think all of you all know how to reach me.
Thank you. You know, I add what we like to do is maybe make this on a quarterly quick update, just see how the measurement period is for benchmark throughout the year.
At least there's at least five or six more there. Should be plenty for you all. But yeah, to keep it, this, I'll try to give the 30,000-foot perspective or whatever the saying is these days, but there's two things here that, you know, once again, we are really the liaison between the city and Blue Cross and Blue Shield. They are the administrator of your plan, and anything that we have numbers-wise is really just reflecting what Blue Cross and Blue Shield has been doing for you all. And this report that's separate from the bound one, those are direct reports from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Now, one thing to note, just as a disclaimer right off the bat...
There's different reporters?
Same one. You got two of them?
Yes, sir.
There you go. They are all the HIPAA, what's called PHI has been removed from these reports, so it's just information about, actually, it's the most recent claims report and where you all are. But I've summarized everything in the bound report, and once again, for the sake of time, I'm only going to skip to a couple of pages. I think a lot of it will make sense to you. I've had a chance to, and I will be focusing a lot more time and attention to this as we do this hopefully on a quarterly basis, and as you all get familiar with it, since I think most of you know how to reach me, feel free to give me a call at any time. I mean, actually, I think it was about a month ago, I think I ran into half of you out to dinner one night, but I'm here a good bit. Be glad to sit down individually or come to another session like this and spend more time on this. But if you would turn to the first, the most important page is page three of this report, and if you look all the way over to the right side, what we've done is, now, we've been involved with the City of Fairhope for, I'm guessing, six-plus years, maybe seven. This report only goes back the last two years prior to the plan year you're in right now. The city plan year for the health insurance is 10-1 through September the 30th, so right now, we've only had reports through February. We typically get reports from Blue Cross and Blue Shield the middle of the month following the end of the prior month. So we got March claims, excuse me, February claims, middle part of this month. But if you look at the far right-hand column in green, $989.03, oh, you did, you got one? Yeah. Is what the total, the per employee per month total cost was for your health plan and for the year ending 9-1-2016. So that would have been technically your 2015-2016 plan year. You'll notice the next year, if you look down at the next green line at 2016, your health plan costs actually went down a really good bit, $84 per employee per month. That's flies in the face of everything we're seeing out there. You hear all these stories about healthcare cost trend going up. It is. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and try to tell you that it's not. Nationally, it is, but the City of Fairhope, from 2015-16 to 16-17, your cost actually went down significantly. Now, so far for this year, for the months of October through the end of February of this year, you're seeing a slight decrease from the prior year at 90444. Everybody see that? So it's basically right on top of it. I mean, you really, there's not any big difference at all. Now, those numbers, just if you look back to the left, and once again, for the sake of time, I won't go into detail, but if you start from the left, go to the right, it talks about subscribers or the number of employees on the plan, members or the number of counting family members that are on the plan, gross medical claims, your total medical claims, specific reimbursements or reimbursements on your stop-loss insurance coverage. You'll notice you had virtually none for this year if you look way down the column there. Subrogation, you don't usually see a lot of money there. Gross pharmacy claims, this is a big part of your total cost. So you have medical, and you have pharmacy, and then you get rebates through your prescription benefit manager, which is a company called Prime Therapeutics. You'll see that on your benefits card, and those are money that come back to the city. Total fees, admin and reinsurance, that is your reinsurance premium along with your administrative fees paid to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Those are what we also call fixed costs. So totaling all those together, you come up with that column of total cost. And you'll notice that's the same amount as the very far right-hand column because up until recently, the employees didn't pay anything. And now, I know they still don't, but any new employees, I think there's a, there's a plan in place to be charging new employees or that's happened to select the old plan.
Can I stop you and ask you that question?
Sure.
This, yeah, this would indicate we haven't had a single employee that's new since we implemented this plan to elect, to pay any. They're taking the zero-cost option?
Either.
I mean, is that what that's saying?
That would be based on this indication, yes.
Is that right?
No.
That's not right? I didn't think it would be right. What's right?
There's a handful, it's not tons, but there are a handful of employees who have come on board since that insurance went into vet.
Okay.
So what we would need, that's obviously information that we don't get and neither does Blue Cross.
You don't get that in.
Now, we wouldn't, unless you all fed it to us, that would be internal information to the City of Fairhope. So we can include that, though.
Well, that would reduce your total net plan cost, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that would, we would like to do is get that information from you all, but whatever you collect out of employees' paychecks, that information's not going to come to Blue Cross or it's not going to come to us unless you all make the effort to get it to us.
Can I ask you to contact Mike?
Yeah.
Who will get with Jill or whomever, so that we can get that total employee contributions and then get, and then you could give us a revised total net plan cost on that?
Yep.
That'd be great. It'll even be better. I'm assuming, right, any number in that column makes the total net cost go down, right?
Yeah, actually, a good way of looking at it, if you'll see, we actually also do a, some people like pictures more than they do numbers, so if you flip to the next page, this is page, on page four, you'll see those same numbers, total cost by year, blue being the 2015-16 year, red being the 16-17 year, and green being the 17-18 year. You'll notice the, your plan was trending down. It did go up a little bit in February. Nothing to concern yourself with. February has been a high month each year. We'll know more as we see what happens coming March, but we should be getting those reports in about three weeks. But if you look at the next page, on page five, when we factor in the employee contributions, that's where you'll see the total net planned cost, because what we'll do is we'll take out what the employees are contributing from what the city's actual costs are. So right now, these two charts are exactly the same, but when we factor those numbers in, well, actually, there's a little bit, well, we may have some information. No, the numbers are exactly the same. So, but once we get that, it'll give you a little bit of idea. I doubt it's going to have a huge impact, obviously.
So let's say on that, we're looking at the green at 114851, and I'm going to make up some easy math. If we had employee contributions of $1,000 and we had that spread over 200 employees, that per employee per month would go down by $5.
Yes.
Got the math on?
I'm not doing the math that quickly in my head, but that'd be about right.
All right.
Most plans, you know, I think everybody's very well aware of the fact that the City of Fairhope's been unique in that they've paid 100% of the single and the family premium for a number of years, and typically, this report's included because you typically see a great deal of contribution coming from employees, particularly for family coverage or anything other than single coverage. So that can have a huge impact, and I don't think it's going to have a significant impact at this stage for you all.
Two, three, four dollars a month, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Five.
And you just don't have enough employees that are new. You know, if you're all, turnover is very low, and it's just not typically going to happen. Now, what we've done with the next few pages are somewhat a recap of the same thing, just we've sliced it and diced it a little bit differently, but once again, it's the same numbers taken down into a different, broken down a little bit differently. But if you go to page nine, this is an important, the next important page, what we have here is your actual cost versus budgeted cost. And your budgeted cost is a figure that we actually calculate for you all based on your expected claims. Based on expected claims, we can calculate your Blue Cross and Blue Shield admin fee, and the other fixed cost is your premium for your stop-loss. And so what we have here is, that's our budget, and if you look at the far right column, once again, if you look at 2015, that's once again, the 2015-16 plan year. Your actual costs were 3.8% below budgeted cost, pretty much on target. That's, that's pretty good. You always want to be below, obviously. That leaves some reserves, of course, for the city. The next year, the 2016-2017 budget was almost 11th percent below, the actual is almost 11th cent below budget. And once again, this year, remember, I've already made the comment that you're almost directly on top of last year's numbers right now. So we did not make a major change to your funding rates for this past year based on what we were seeing, and these numbers reflect it. So they're right there on top of each other.
So this budget is based on your projected expenses, correct?
Right.
And that's based on a per employee number, right? So I mean, in other words, you can't just artificially add, say, you're going to, you know, budget that we're going to have 30 more employees than we're actually going to have and then get that number. It's based on a per employee amount, right?
Yeah, that's why you look at that subscribers and members at the far left side, Jack. That's going to show you the, the actual numbers. Now, if they, if they change dramatically, the budget's going to, should reflect it because we're coming up, once again, we're taking, your projected claims are driven by the number of employees you have, and that's the one thing that really changes. But your stop-loss premium also goes up with the more people that you have. And so does your admin fee, because your admin fee is driven by claims. So the more people you have, the more claims you have, and the more your admin fee has gone forward. So they all do come together, and they should, if, once again, we've done a good job of projecting your funding rates, then you should be right on budget or hopefully below. Once again, our goal is that you're going to be below budget. The more you're below budget, the better off the city is, but it's been pretty darn close. We've got about two minutes. So once again, if you'll flip over to page 11, it's just graphically showing you the same thing I just showed you. You're slightly below last year's cost. So for the sake of time, let's skip through some of these pages, and let's get down to page 15. Page 15, you have two types of stop-loss coverage. You have what's called specific, which is for individuals, and then you have aggregate, which is for the whole group. A lot of cities or, well, any employer that looks at going self-funded, like the City of Fairhope did back a few years ago, you're always sensitive to your liability. What kind of exposure do you have? Well, the way this plan was set up, we eliminated any exposure because there's a cap over your total cost, and that cap is called your aggregate. The gray columns here for each of the last three years show you what the stop-loss carrier calculated as the absolute top claims that you would be responsible for, the city would be responsible for. And what we have here is, what we do is we track that because if, once you, for instance, let's look at last year, which was a total year. If your claims had reached $3.8 million, at that point in time, the city would have paid, had responsibility, paid no claims whatsoever. The stop-loss carrier would have picked up all claims over $3.8 million. Everybody with me there? Well, you only had $2.3 million of claims, so there was a huge $1.5 million differential. The year before wasn't that big of a differential in the green. So far this year, once again, you're running way below what your, this aggregate, this, I call it umbrella. This is basically the umbrella that tops off your exposure. So once again, those are all good news numbers. Some employers will sometimes decide that they don't want to carry aggregate coverage. It's very inexpensive of your total stop-loss premium. It's really small dollars, but once again, it keeps you from having that potential risk of going above a certain amount and having to come up with the money. Now, the next couple of pages somewhat mirror these Blue Cross and Blue Shield reports that we have in the separate attachment, but on page 16, what you'll see is these are your claims that are greater than $35,000 over the course, and you'll see you've got a lot of them that, this is over a number of years now. And then if you look, that's, if you look at 2016, you have a number of claims over $35,000 in 2016. So the first page, page 16 is for 2015. Page 17 is for your 2016. You had a number of, you had 11 claimants over $35,000 that year, and then this year so far, there are four. And once again, there's no HIPAA information here, but if you look on the top page of the attachment, you can see what these four conditions are. You have a premature child, you have hepatitis C patient, you have a Crohn's disease patient, and you have a cancer patient.
That's on this page right here. He's referring to.
And the good news with this is that, and this is good news no matter how you look at it, is that more than likely, a couple of these claims will, hopefully, the premature child will end up in a situation where they're not running claims at the level they've had them. Hep C is a very common condition that we see these days. The medication is what corrects this, and the thing about Hep C medication is it not only treats it, it cures it. And this person wouldn't be in the program if he wasn't or she wasn't on the way to being cured on the Hep C. So that would be another claim that'll come off.
Hence the $32,000 subscription price.
Yeah.
For the prescription for each one.
Yeah, if you look, the next page shows you the top client drugs for 2015. Page 20 is the top drug for 2016, and then so far this year, as Desmond mentioned, Harboni is a Hep C drug, and that's your top claim this year on the prescription.
And that usually runs its course in six months. So in kind of a summary, I mean, if your total plan costs represent $1, you're seeing .34 going towards hospital, and that's low. You're seeing about, you're seeing 34%, .34 going also to prescription drugs, and then you're seeing .32 going towards physicians. The .34 that's going towards prescriptions is high by about 15 to 20%. So it lends some opportunity for some future discussion of how we can reduce that, if you're looking for opportunity to reduce costs.
For example, is there a generic version of Harboni that if you were on a different script plan?
No.
There's some help for that.
Yeah.
There's some help for that we could guide to, but overall, we need to do a study of where all the, that .34 comes from across the entire scope of all the prescriptions made, and it could be just the formulary that's been used.
That's basically what Cobb Allen told us during their presentation.
Yeah, and we mentioned to you a couple of years before that we didn't act on. We even got a proposal on that. So it's what objectives, we still kind of wait, what kind of objectives that the city would like to accomplish. I mean, it could be obviously lower cost, what trend rate, but also the objectives of how much that the employee should pay. There's basically three avenues, you know, for a perfect health plan. There's one is you have access to go to the doctor anytime you want. The second component is that you can, you're insulated from the cost, any cost, no matter what it is. And the third is it's affordable. They can afford a premium. The problem is, is no one's perfect, and there's no perfect health plan. You have to sacrifice one, and usually, access is the best thing. So there, we'll mention it also again, there's opportunity to use some direct-to-provisor negotiations, which our team is certainly prepared to discuss if it interests the council.
Yeah, there's, to answer your question further, I'll elaborate on what Desmond's saying. We did look at, over the years, your pharmacy right now, the benefits are managed by Prime Therapeutics, which is owned by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Most groups your size will consider what's called carving out the drugs and going to other pharmacy managers. They can do a lot of the things that Desmond just mentioned. Typically, they can bring savings to the table. The city has elected in the past not to consider that route because of numerous reasons, one of them being the fact that Blue Cross is, they don't like carve-outs, let's put it that way. They will contend that you don't have good coordination of care because the physician is not directly managing the pharmacy. You've got somebody outside of Blue Cross that's managing it. I don't know if I give a lot of credence to that argument. As Desmond said, I think it's worth looking at because you might as well consider what the options are that could save the city some money. Any questions at all? I know we've gone over a lot of information fairly quickly.
We're just six minutes over. It's pretty good.
You know, even with, even with some of those really high prescription med costs, the overall net pharmacy claims were down.
Are down, yeah, they are.
Pretty surprising.
But they represent .34 of every dollar.
Yeah.
Which, from a standard, is, is high.
They should go down some more with the, when that Harboni comes off your list. You know, of course, it could be replaced by something else, and specialty medications are just, even if with the change of your pharmacy manager, you can't save that much money on specialty medications. That's just, everybody basically pays the same for it. But once again, Desmond's comment about that .34, don't lose sight of that, because back, if I was having this meeting with you all 10 years ago, your drugs would probably have been 20 to 25% of your total healthcare cost. Now they're at 35%. That's, that's how it's driving your healthcare cost right now.
And what is typical?
It's still 25 to 30 now would be about normal.
So we're 5 to 10% above average?
You're actually about 20-some odd percent. I mean, if you look at it from...
Oh, I'm sorry, from a percentage point.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. Exactly. I'm sorry. Especially in the pharmacy industry, you have to, that's what they would say, 5 to 10% more.
That's exactly right.
Brad, I did find out that there are eight employees signed up, and so far here today, those employees have paid $5,800.
Can I give you my card when I leave and just ask you to, if you could send that to me?
I will.
And I'll make sure Blue Cross is in, and look with you on that. Thank you.
Okay. It's pretty good. 2,200. You're probably dropping about a dollar.
Yeah, but you know, it's, it's over time, you know, it'll make a big difference.
But even that dollar over, is that total number? You know, if it's so far, 320, if it went down $3.20, I mean, it's a percent.
Yeah, yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be looking at that negatively. I would think that's...
No, I'm not, no, not at all.
Yeah. Any questions? Any questions for Frank, for Desmond? Mayor, any questions? Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we can get you all to just put that number in and tell us what, just that bottom line, but this is really good, and I think that it'll give us some direction on, you know, if we want to attack cost or leave it as is, you know, give us some, some numbers to look at, to discuss. Well, you've already done some cost shifting when you went with employee making a contribution. You didn't do anything to really manage your claims. You just shifted a little bit of the cost to the employees. Now, what we typically like to do is try to manage claims better. You know, how do we do some things that actually affect how you're driving claims? And some of the things Desmond mentioned, we can help get there.
We'd like to look at things that we can do to make the employees healthier, too.
Yeah, that's what I mean, exactly, yeah. That's exactly right.
That's how I'd like to do the next step.
Yeah, the wellness and programs like that, they will actually help mitigate, reduce your claims, and that's really what you need to be doing.
Definitely.
Thanks, Mike.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, Fuel Master System Discussion. Jennifer, Drew?
Hello.
Hello.
I'll take one, do the other one. You're starting me.
It's all of you.
Oh, geez. Basically, what we have is the Fuel Master program, and which is currently being used with the City of Fairhope. And it would just be an addition to the Marina, adding a separate package. We have a quote from Fuel Master. Do you guys need another brochure?
Yes, please. Do you want to see that?
Absolutely.
Did you see it?
Mm-hmm. Sure. If you don't need a reference. Basically, what it'll do is, besides making my life a lot easier and everyone else's, is when you come up to the fuel dock, you'll be assisted by, assisted by an attendant that you'll be able to run your own credit card and get your own receipt. The city accountants, as far as, as Jill and Jennifer Olmstead, will be able to track this online, live, basically, be able to give me reports, daily reports if I need them. They'll also have daily reports. The other thing which is going to benefit is for the folks at Seaport, Alea, which are the troopers, and also since Fly Creek will be purchasing fuel from us, you will get, they will get a cart plastic key, which is programmable, and all they do is come up and insert their key. It's their program. They can only buy a certain type of fuel, and everything is under their information. It's trackable, and we also be able to bill them as well. Instead of what we were planning on doing in the beginning was having an attendant down there, a receipt book, run up to the office and possibly swipe their credit card or send the person up to the office and pay for their fuel, and then while you have everybody else waiting in the water to get fuel. So it's a little bit faster program for everybody.
What do you do if somebody only has cash? Can they still get fuel?
No.
No? You're going to not take cash?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't have, I don't have a cash register, basically. But yes, you can, you can pay cash with it, but...
They would just have to go inside at that point in time instead of swiping their card at the pump.
Okay. You know, I'm looking through the brochure, and I see that there are, it's, looks like it's geared a lot towards, and it's just the brochure, maybe, the aviation industry, and then also for vehicles, and I'm sure that's for, you know, fleet operations and things such as that. What concerns do we have over somebody polluting the water when nobody's there? when nobody's there, and they spill fuel right into Fly Creek?
No one's going to be able to pump fuel by themselves. It has to, you have to be able to pump fuel, and the person being, pumping the fuel will be a city employee.
Most marinas, well, it's good to know that somebody's going to be there, but most mariners now won't even, they won't, like on a boat, they won't let you. They will not fuel your boat for you. They will physically hand you the hose and say, "You do it." But I was just thinking that if nobody was there to watch it in the...
It'll, it'll be locked up at night.
No, but so, so, but now I'm back to, now if we do have an employee fueling someone's boat, what kind of liability do we have there?
Well, it's, it's not, it's not as far as the, the employee fueling as far as myself. It's going to be as, come up, they swipe their credit card, they punch in their zip code, just like at a gas station, and you're there to assist them, basically, with the machine. You hand them the hose, and they go do it. If they spill...
Okay, you're only assisting them with the machine. They're going to actually physically pump the gas.
If they spill the fuel, we have emergency equipment to support that area and basically to fuel spill. But it will be on them if they do fuel.
Okay. I think that's why, I mean, I've got fuel this weekend for my boat, and they literally, they'll go, "Here, you do it." And you're like, "What?"
No, it's your vessel. It's your liability.
Yeah, okay. All right, very good, very good. All right, what's bottom line?
Bottom line is 10,520.
Is there a, just because we're talking about this, are we going to have a cash price versus a credit card price for fuel?
Well, that's what we're working out as well. I'm trying to find out, I've got to find someone local that's already selling the fuel. But when we do get the fuel from Tracy Thomas, from Davidson Fuels, we, the city would be taxed on the gas, not the red fuel. So therefore, we turn around and do not tax the gas, but we will have to tax the diesel.
Okay.
But those are prices that we'll have to come up with and figure out through you guys.
When are we going to get the tanks? The tanks aren't installed yet, are they?
The tanks are not installed. I spoke to the manufacturer today, hopefully around two and a half, three weeks from now, from today's date.
In this 10,500, not a bad price, actually, less than I thought it would be. What, what's the service life of this? Who do you think, an estimate, five years, 10 years?
I'd say five years. Well, the way we're going to do it, that I've talked with Richard Johnson and also Joe Walchina, it was for the, we're going to have quick disconnects for everything. So during an event of a storm surge, hurricane.
Pick that up and move it. That's great.
So, everything but the tank.
Right. That's great, right there.
Fuel pump out, everything.
I think just that, you know, the faster we can get all this stuff implemented, the faster we can start making that Marina everything that it needs to be.
The other thing too, is which I wanted to mention to you guys, is that I've been turning down quite a few people in slip rentals, because I have to keep so many as far as transient dockage. I still am selling slips, but I'm having to do it not on a 12-month lease. I basically do it for a couple of months here and there, based on what people's schedule are and what they're doing. But also, like you said, the faster we move on things, I need more slips.
This is huge, right here.
Yeah. This is, this is a big deal, but moving forward with bulkheads and redoing the docks and the power and everything else down there is going to greatly benefit everyone.
Well, and if we had to remove that for one storm, we've probably paid for it, because what we have there now could be destroyed, right?
Absolutely.
Well, council, I know it's only, there's only three of us, but three of us can make a difference. What do y'all, y'all have questions first of all, and?
We've talked about it. Makes sense to me.
Me too. You could, I think you could put it in a, I guess it'd be unbudgeted, but you can budget it and put it in there. Get it ordered. Let's get that fuel flowing.
That's what we're working for.
Quicker we can get that flowing, the quicker we make up those costs.
We're pushing it. Do you need to add anything?
Can it be here in two weeks?
You want it on tonight's agenda? I think it'll pass.
Put everything on there.
Put a truck out there with a pump?
Lisa, add that, remind me to add that.
That way the tanks get here, when the tanks get here.
Yeah.
I don't think that's too controversial. We can't put that on there tonight. Had no sense in waiting. Think we're going to get it? Let's get it.
Well, it'll follow up, it'll help follow up with number, item number three.
Right. That's right. Okay. All right, Drew, you can stay up here.
Thank you.
All right. Jennifer, thank you. Sewall Reinforcement of the Fuel Dock.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Doing good, doing good, Richard.
Just to kind of give you a quick background, when we got specs on the new fuel tank, Drew asked me to design the slab for it, including room on the slab, not only for the sewer pump out, but for some kind of fuel distribution, credit card system, and everything else. And as we went through that process, we kept encountering some subsidence there on what would be the southeast corner of the area where we want to locate this new fuel slab. We got some, some free advice from several of the folks in the industry about bulkheads and sewalls, and we just did not feel comfortable spending all this money to build this large structural slab to support the fuel system without making sure that the, the foundation support was there. So what we went out for, for prices on was an additional bulkhead system that would wrap around where this fuel slab for the fuel tanks is to go. And, and we got a price back of $16,924 to basically isolate the fuel slab. The new fuel dock, some great insight there. It is built as a self-supporting, like a pier. So what, if anything goes away underneath it, it's all supported on its own pile system and everything else. But our concern is, is that we go and, and, and just to give you an example, this slab is 22 by 36, eight inch in the field with turn downs and structural support around it. The fuel tank itself, dry, is 10,600 pounds and holds 10,000 gallons worth of fuel. I know fuel is lighter than water, but figured about eight pounds a gallon. So there's another four tons of fuel in there. It's, it's a beefy, beefy structure, and we don't want to get it undermined. So that is what we're here today to, to, to ask your support on making sure that we do this right. I will just tell you, we've got the slab design. We're building that in-house. That's constructed in-house. If we can, if we can get this bulkhead put in and get the slab poured, you know, I think we're still be able to receive that tank when the manufacturer brings it this way and get it placed and go forward. Be glad to ask, answer any questions. And council president, you were so generous to, to offer the walk-on on item number two. I would be glad to accept the same.
I'm being so generous tonight.
Generous offer tonight, so.
I want to walk this on too, if these gentlemen will allow me to.
Yeah, I thought we'd already, so. I thought we'd already discussed this, but I guess we hadn't, was that just being brought to our attention that we were going to have to?
We discussed it, but we didn't have numbers for you. We have, we have...
You're saving so much money on insurance. Really, the only reason we're doing all this is because we had the health insurance presentation prior.
But be glad to ask any question, answer any questions, so.
I think we need to do it sooner rather than later. Summer's coming up quick.
Mayor, what you want, what do you want tonight, huh? What?
Any other questions, sir?
I'd get out of here while I'm hot.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, really, it's a no-brainer. Because the way it's sitting now, if you were to put that there, you could have a catastrophic event if you don't protect that area.
All right, grant request in use of impact fees for soccer field bleachers. You are not Sherry Lee.
I am not. Very observant.
Sherry Lee asked me to play her role.
You were that close.
I told her I would in the text.
First of all, with the, with the bleachers out there at the soccer complex, you know, Sherry Lee had in mind to use some impact fee money to use those. And I'm not sure how much of this she'd already discussed with you at all, if any. But, you know, prior to buying those, Richard and I are going to sit down and do a master plan of what we have to do for sidewalks to make everything ADA compliant to all the fields out there at the soccer complex. And I believe he's going to talk about a TAP grant that may help us out with that. And then, like I mentioned, Sherry Lee was, was wanting to use impact money for bleachers for all the fields.
And you may have heard us mention it, and we were actually going to bring you something a little bit more solid at the next council meeting. The folks with the Federal Highway apparently have had a surplus of TAP dollars. So they have announced intermediate TAP grant that has to be submitted by the 1st of May. And the Manley Road Soccer Complex for sidewalk systems that are ADA compliant would qualify under it. It's an $800,000, up to $800,000 total grant with the 7525. The good news is, the design for the sidewalks were done at the time of the design of the complex, but that was one of the things that were value engineered out to, because I think the numbers were a little high when we were trying to build that at that time. So the good news is, we have pretty good budget numbers. We have pretty good design to go with. But that would be Sherry Lee's, and my recommendation is that may be a great application for that TAP. And we would try to push it to the limits where we can include the slabs for the bleachers so they're tied in with ADA compliance, meaning that you can get from anywhere in the park, on the sidewalks, to the actual bleacher slabs and be ADA compliant. And I think we can do that. And then that would allow Tom, as money's available, to actually put the bleachers in. So that's, that's my recommendation, and I think it may be a good fit for this mid-year surprise with the TAP monies that are available.
So would all the bleachers be affixed permanently, or would you have some that are portable?
No, we would have to, we would have to bolt those to the concrete slabs. You'd have to, yeah. Because they turn into sails if you don't.
Gotcha.
And the, the modern aluminum bleachers has, I don't know how to describe it, but they have the landings or the areas down front for those that are in wheelchairs. So we'd have to make sure that the pathway that comes to it is integrated into that actual foundation for that, that bleacher.
And the 75 is, we're, we're the 25 part.
That's correct. Yes, sir. And just if I remember, the, the full sidewalk package in the sports complex for Manley Road was around about $450,000, what that estimate was in 2014 or whenever it was produced. So it's probably, if we did the complete sidewalk package as proposed, you're probably looking at about $500,000 with 25% of it being on us.
You didn't put none of the sidewalk package in there?
Just to the central concessions, is that right?
Actually, no, that was, the soccer club came back and paid for that.
Okay.
No, I'm wrong. No, I think, I think there was some monies left there. And Robert Brown handled that. I think there was some monies left there. He, he had a sidewalk poured going out just north of the concession and to the concession.
Remember talking about this quite some time ago, Councilman Boone. Do you recall where that went? I thought we had all this. I just can't believe we didn't have ADA compliant sidewalks, you know.
The sidewalk that is there right now, there is a sidewalk that goes from the parking lot to the central concessions, and the concessions has an apron around it. That's it. But right now, if you're, if you wanted to use a sidewalk to get to the 50-yard line of a field, there is none that run between the fields. So, and the original plan actually had a complete system of sidewalks that serviced every sideline of every field.
I do remember one discussion on that, that the, I think they made those sidewalks either, I think 12 feet or enough to accommodate a vehicle.
I, I think you're right. I think those plans...
And they decided that was a little wide for what they really needed it for.
Yeah.
But I always thought the sidewalks were going in because they were going to shorten the width of it.
I even thought we had maybe even applied for a grant for those sidewalks at one time.
We did it, we did it one time for that and the bleachers, and it, we did not make the cut.
Okay. Was that a TAP grant as well?
That was through a DECA.
A DECA, yeah.
There's a little harder to get, so.
I don't have a problem applying for a grant. Anytime we get 75 cents on the dollar, I, I don't know about the impact fees. I'd want to look into that. I'm trying to find the money somewhere in the budget before we go after impact fees, but...
And I will tell you, Mr. Boone, just from a runoff standpoint and everything, you know, the ADA's requires five foot. I would, six foot would be about the most I'd go on a width of any sidewalk.
Yeah, that was the discussion.
If you go eight or 12.
Eight at one time.
Yeah, that's a little...
And I might have been a little wrong as far as the 12, but I know they were wider than what we actually needed for what the purposes they were going to use. And then, you know, you're trying to save that much more, or try to use that much less concrete.
Absolutely.
For comparison.
For the total length and the width.
That's it.
So for comparison, Mr. Cool, if you're walking down the sidewalk at Volanta through the youth baseball fields, and let's say you're going from the ozone back to t-ball, what's the width of that sidewalk?
That's five foot.
That's five foot, okay. All right. So do you, would you like to give this boot up some direction on the grant application?
Yes, sir. And as you recall, with TAP grants, it does require resolution and support. So that's what we're going to be getting toward you with a better fleshing.
May 1st is the deadline for the application.
Yes, meaning that we'd either have to have it on your 9th or your 23rd meeting, so.
Put it on for the night.
And I do have a question about the impact fees. I mean, don't we have a bucket of impact fees that's specific for parks and rec? There's already money available?
There is money in, in there for parks and rec, but I think there's some stipulations to it where you can't be replacing something. It has to be a new item, which, you know, these would fall under that. They are a new item. And that, you know, the, the non-elevated bleachers, to do all nine fields, would come to about $117,000. Elevated, 32 inches, it's about $151,000. Now, those are, those are 10-row, 12-foot-high bleachers on seven of the small fields. And then on the two larger fields, they're 10-row, 90-foot-long to accommodate 500 people each, so we could apply for...
So you would apply, the grant would actually pay for the bleachers?
No.
No, that's just for the concrete?
No.
Yeah, I think we can probably accommodate the footprint for the bleachers. But, you know, one of the decisions that has been made is which field would have what size bleachers, so we know what that footprint needs to be, so that we can work toward that.
And we should look at the impact fees, at least get the balance, because Parks and Recs usually does get a big portion of it.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't thinking that it would be a deal killer at all. I just, I just think we could, we'll find the money. We'll find the money. I think we have it. I just don't want to tie ourselves down to that either, to slow anything down. So I'd rather move ahead. What are your thoughts on, on bleacher capacity? I, I don't want to have a Taj Mahal field and have a underserved...
Two sets of bleachers that would hold 500 people? That's, sounds like a lot. I mean, I guess you got a Field of Dreams if you build it. Are you going to bring the people, or are you just going to have a bunch of empty bleachers?
What do you think soccer from this, like the Halloween bash and all that? I mean, you get thousands of people out there at a time.
Yeah, and, and the, the larger bleachers, bleachers on the two championship fields would allow us to apply to get, like, high school soccer finals down here, state finals. You know, they're all done way up north. There's, I don't know that there's ever been any done down here in this part of the state. That would allow us to apply for them. They're, they're tied up now until, you know, for a couple more years. They've got a contract, you know, with one of the cities up north. But, you know, at least we could apply for it. And, and when, you know, when you break it down at $117,000, I know it's, it's, it's a lot of money, but, you know, bringing folks to town for a state tournament, you know.
That was a total cost?
Total cost installed, $117,000.
Per field or per total?
No, that's nine bleachers.
That sounds low to me.
That's nine bleachers.
Put it on the...
You know, the elevated ones obviously be, you know, quite a bit more, and it bumps it up to 151, but...
It's still not bad.
It's not bad.
I like the 151.
That's a lot of hardware.
That was way less than I thought it would be.
It's a lot of hardware.
I'd say, well, apply for the grant for the larger pads. I mean...
Okay.
It'd be the safe thing to do. Maybe we have a pad and we have smaller bleachers, but in the future, if, if we were to even do that, at least we'd have the pad.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Maybe we won't, maybe we'll have the, the larger size. All right. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Richard, you're still here.
Thank you again.
You're the classification streets crew leader to supervisor discussion.
Yes, sir. And just kind of, let me paint the scenario. As, as I came on board and, you know, the mayor was asking for us to look at our organizational charts and make recommendations and things of that nature. Sometimes you make assumptions and they're...
Sometimes you make assumptions and they're wrong. We actually have a distinguished city employee that has, is over the streets department, which includes streets and construction. They handle everything that goes on with drainage repairs, street repairs, signs, striping, and that type of thing. And I assumed he was a supervisor, like any other supervisor, over horticulture or over mechanical maintenance, or over building maintenance, et cetera. And it turns out that he is classified as a crew leader. And he came to me and wanted to make sure that I knew the errors in my way, because I just made the assumption he was a supervisor, had him in a supervisor slot in the org chart. And he kinda explained that, you know, that was a goal, as well as, in a prior administration, it was that if you complete your college degree and you serve in this capacity for, successfully, that that would be the recommendation. And I'm kinda trying to follow through on at least that request. And to ask that, that one, we abolish the crew leader, but reclassify it as a street supervisor. We did work with HR and updated a job description for the street supervisor. We modeled it in line with horticulture, solid waste, mechanical maintenance, and set the grade, kind of between the higher and the lower. And depending how you calculate it, this young man would qualify for one, he's already qualified for 1.5%, so some of these numbers are a little skewed. You'd have to back the 1.5 out. But the request is to reclassify him to a supervisor position, per the job description attached, at a salary of $60,000, and, which would be a net increase of 61-64, if my math is too correct, because the 1.5% raises are applied. Any questions?
No, I wouldn't want to say though, when we do a 1.5% increase, that doesn't change salary ranges, though. The ranges don't change based on that. That would require, you know, a study or a recommendation from Personnel Board to change brackets. But the $60,000 being in the center of that is, you know, certainly, I think, reasonable. What is the current pay grade for the crew leader?
Well, you just caught me off guard. I do not know what that answer is, and I don't know if Leslie is in the audience. She will, she will find that.
Well, and it's not super critical, because you said that the salary would be $60,000, which was a 61-64 increase?
Correct. And that would put him a little bit below the midpoint of the salary range for the pay grade 25.
Council questions, comments? Give us some thought. I don't think we should put this on tonight's agenda.
I understand. I thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilman Boone, committee reports?
Actually, I don't have any. We had a hard meeting, our Personnel Board's gonna be meeting April.
Councilman Gani?
Yeah, I've just got, update, the library meeting is scheduled for Monday, a week from today. That's April the 2nd, then we have Historic Preservation Thursday, April the 5th, and the Environmental Advisory Board is Friday, the 13th, 3:00 PM, that meeting.
The only thing I can tell you from the Airport Authority is that that's still in negotiations with the potential landing of a big employer, and taking up to, you know, 20, 20, 20-plus acres on the west side of the airport. I know, Mayor, that you met with some of them last week. I want to sit down and talk to you about that offline, if I may. But anyway, it could be a potential Kickstarter for the whole west side of the airport, and maybe get that, get that moving. And I actually think the west side is probably a little bit harder to get kickstarted than the east side, because the east side's where all the new stuff, new improvements are going on. So, it's critical to get something going on the, on the west side. And I really, I can't, I can't discuss companies or any terms of that, that transaction right now. That's the only committee report that I have. Department heads, department heads, if you have something, I know, Richard, you've been up here the whole time. If you have something to bring for us, if you'll come to the podium and just let us know, rather than me going around the room and calling you all out by name.
I do want to mention that we started doing the director roundtable before the work session, and we had a 30-minute, kinda in-depth, update on each department. We just really never know if they're gonna have time to speak. So, and it is important that those things get out there, so.
Right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've emailed all of you, and I'm not sure exactly where the place for all this is, but on Friday, we, we did Operation Dye Test on the outfall line, at the request of a lot of citizens. And when I was here, Dr. Douglas actually brought it to my attention, and then we had looked at a boat ride in the fall, and noticed what they were talking about at that point in time, and promised that we would do this. Well, the winter's been pretty severe weather-wise, and so we finally found an opportunity just last Friday, the light east wind, and we did have dye show up where this breach is. So, what I'd like to do is get the evaluation from a diver, and I tried to explain this as best I can, if y'all cut me off in the future. But it, and I don't know if this is a maintenance expense, it's part of the wastewater operation already, or if it's considered a new budget item that we need to talk about. But, and to know what the extent of the repair requirement would be, I'd like to get the diving operation to assess it for us first.
Is that concrete, is that concrete pipe that goes out there?
It's a polyethylene pipe with concrete anchors that are bolted around the pipe every 20 or so feet, from, best I can tell from what I've been told.
And how large are those pipes?
It's 24-inch diameter.
Two feet?
Yes.
And is there only one?
Yes.
And so, about how far out was that breach?
It's 150 to 200 yards.
200, okay. And then what's the, what is the final exit? Where is it supposed to be?
It's about 3,000 feet out in the bay. This is where the permit.
Right. And that's the key, is to be in compliance with the permit, right?
Yes, correct.
Oh, wow, is that the dye coming up?
That's the dye.
Is that an actual photo?
Yeah, that's the hovercraft or the drone. You can thank Sean for that.
Wow. Do you have a, do you have an aerial view? Well, you wouldn't be able to see where the other, well, I guess if you put the dye, you should see the actual main outfall further on out in the bay, right?
Yes.
So, it's popping up about 150 to 200 yards out, and it should be coming out about 1,000 yards out?
Yes, correct.
3,000 feet. 1,000 yards.
1,000 yards.
Put them into the same measurement for everyone watching. Okay.
And do we wanna take it out further?
Well, and that's been the discussion from Dr. Douglas all along, is that, you know, he would like it to be out two miles instead of 3,000 feet. Now, yeah, I've talked to ADM, and I'm trying to get the modeling people to respond to some information relative to a study on Mobile Bay. And what Dr. Douglas has claimed was that the model that he had seen of Mobile Bay showed just a fairly significant eddy current that exists between Point Clear and north, to north of Rock Creek, where the bay kinda has a bowl shape to it. And the outfall line at 3,000 feet doesn't quite extend beyond that location. So, he's, what little bit of hydraulic study he had seen, he feels like there's some currents that circulate in, you know, kind of a eddy fashion along the beach, which raises a little bit of.
Within the, within the 3,000 feet?
Correct, yes, sir. And I don't know where it needs to be or how it needs to be.
And explain that to us, because, I mean, we're putting, you know, almost drinking water into the bay right now. I mean, the effluent is extremely clean, I mean, cleanest of anywhere in the state, with our new, with our new treatment upgrades and our new.
And there are two factors that really.
Scrubbing system at the end.
You know, we still release a little bit of nitrogen, a little bit of phosphorus, because we're not, I mean, completely void of that, but, you know, so that's a nutrient load.
Do you need some nitrate, does it take some oxygen out of the water?
Well, and that's what, when you get algae blooms and things like, you've heard the dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico out of, from the Mississippi River. Well, it's a function of the nitrates and the phosphorus, it's fertilizers from the fields. But, and so then you create algae blooms, you know, first it promotes life, and then when all that oxygen is consumed, then now they die and they take the oxygen back out of the water. So, that's where the dead zone occurs in the Gulf. But I don't know the answer to it, I just know that, you know, anybody that has a concern for that, I think there's, there's some investigation, and I'm gonna start with the modeling people at ADM and just make sure I understand exactly where the purpose of their model is, and how it shows in terms of the total bay hydraulic model.
First and foremost, we need to.
Need to make a repair.
I think we need to fix first, yeah, let's get it fixed.
How far beneath the surface is that, Mr. Peterson?
The water depth there is about 2.5 feet deep.
I mean, a boat can hit it, and not, and not all of the pipe.
Now, that's the water depth from the bottom. Now, when you take the boat with the depth finder on it, you see a dramatic change in the depth profile, and it gets down to maybe 4.5 feet, as if that's the depth of the top of the pipe. And that water has kind of washed away the material right over the pipe where the leak has occurred.
Now, if we fix this, is there gonna be another leak that pops up 200 yards further down the line?
Probably not, you'll probably see it.
We didn't see any dye anywhere else except at the very end and at that location.
Yeah, just by the way it flows. It'd come up everywhere, it might be less or more, but it'd come up.
And just kind of summarizing, we've got 1,000 yards for the outfall. We got a leak at about 150. What is leaking out is essentially is clean, been cleaned, treated water at that point, but it does have additional nitrogen and other things in it, more than it should. So, it's better to get it further on out into the bay.
Yeah, I mean, there's pharmaceuticals, and there's, you know, microbeads that are part of effluents.
But it's not raw sewage?
No, it's not raw sewage. Absolutely not.
Not even close to that. But, I mean, it still needs to be fixed, but it's not, it's not close to being raw sewage or anything. I'm saying that for the folks watching.
And Bio-Labachic, for example, they're closer to some oyster harvesting areas. And the Health Department would indicate that, you know, if there is any upset, and upsets can occur, and it's not something that we planned for, but there are people who can discharge things in the wastewater that affect the treatment process. And that would affect, you know, not only the beach, if that breach were to remain, but, you know, if 3,000 feet is out there and we still have the circulation pattern that we're not confident of, you know, it would be something we'd wanna be alerted to, if nothing else.
What I'm thinking of on that, on the damage to that, is that we have, you know, we have a lot of power boats, we have a lot of sailboats, and, you know, you're following your depth finder, you're running along in your boat, and you're following the bottom. And I don't know if it's on the charts or not, that there's an outflow line going across the bay. And so, if you've got a sailboat with a big ballast on it, and you think, well, I'm three feet from the bottom, you know, you're only, you're gonna slice right through it.
I don't know if any boats anchor that close in during storm events, but anchors can.
Anchors could do it.
Do that. But now, if you'd like to have the assessment extend the full length of the outfall line, and I don't know if there's a way to find out what the depth of that is or not, but, you know.
I'm just curious, you know, I don't know if you could harden them anyway. I mean, we don't have to find an anchor with Richard Peterson written on it.
But I do know that when, the most extreme of the winter weather occurred, there was a place between where that breach is off the beach and the beach where some of that effluent line was exposed. And it's almost like it had a little bit of a crown that, where maybe it floated up before, you know, it was full of water. And I don't know if there's something that we might wanna do with that. Certainly, if we have a diver that close to it, we ought to get them to evaluate the line coming back to the niche.
I know it sounds crazy, I don't wanna junk up the bay, but is there a way to mark it? I don't know, just to, just to.
And we did have a pile and mark in the discharge location. And Dan had contacted ADM about the marker not being there anymore. And when we went out in December and looked at it, we went out to the outfall line, and the marker had disappeared through, whether it be a winter storm or whatever. But Dan tells me, ADM says we do not have to have it marked. But I think it's a good idea to have it on charts, if that's something that the Corps of Engineers does, or I don't know, who would be responsible for that, but.
To petition to get it on a chart, but it certainly seems like it'd be a great idea. You have wrecks all over, you know, the Gulf and in the bay.
That's right.
And charting.
But we could have a sign for acreage that would be between the beach and the outfall line. I don't know if we'd wanna put one in between the two or not, but that's a thought, and I'll pursue that.
I'm trying to think of protecting it. Okay, all right.
And then the last thing I did want, I sent out some information, we had gotten the price, and looking at the south side of the airport for a potential decentralized sewer system, and the capacity of that site for a loading rate for an effluent. Is any, any thoughts on that, or?
I think we were all in favor of that.
What's your solution? Your hybrid solution?
Sir?
You're talking about that hybrid solution for the east side project?
Yes. Well, now, this would be.
You talked to.
This would be 80 acres on the very end of the airport.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
This is a whole, this is, this is.
No, this is a different.
This would be a decentralized facility for subdivisions that would develop along 32 and potentially south of 32. And with the 80 acres that looks like available, from talking with the Airport Authority, the, if the ground is adequate for percolation, which is the disposal process for this system, we may could have 1,500 or so units connected to that system, which would keep us from pumping it, you know, through the transmission system into the plant, you know, on the bay. So, it's an option for being able to allow growth to occur further away from the city without necessarily having to bring it all through the city to get it to be treated.
Will we get some cost on that?
Well, that's, when we get the application rates that would be recommended, then we'll be able to give you some cost on the capital improvement requirements.
And tell me again, that acreage is on, is that south of Bishop Road, that partial south of Bishop? You know, we have a little piece of airport property that's on the south side of Bishop.
There's about 80 acres that extend from the south boundary of the runway out. And now, is Bishop Road the road that's gotten curved around? Yeah, it's right in that same location.
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna take that prime east side.
Because once you, once you put it there, that's it.
And the thing about the way that these airports are, you know, when you approach a runway, you can't build anything in front of the approach to a runway. But, and so, what we're talking about is a place that really is not gonna be anything for building on, anyway.
And Mr. Peterson, also, look at that map close, a lot of people don't know. We have a little bit of land on, I don't know if we want it there, but it's just, you know, from logistics standpoint, or how far you have to run your lines, there's a little bit of land on the north side of 32.
And I saw that on.
Okay, maybe too small of a parcel, but there is a parcel there.
But this is an option, I think, is viable, and I'd like to pursue it if it's, if it's okay.
I wanna think about that a little bit more. That's a pretty heavy duty right there. I don't, I don't wanna give you an answer in here right now.
The one that he's talking about, though, in front of the.
It'd be 80 acres on the south side.
Yeah, I know, I'd give it a look though.
Okay.
I mean, that's me, that's just me, counsel, y'all have any comments on that? You said, serve 1,500 customers?
Potentially.
Potential.
Which we go back to.
And what I hear is one major industry that may be wanting to relocate.
I'm not disagreeing at all, I'm just, I think about, that's pretty big. It's a pretty big one.
That now, that's what we're like, we need to do.
Well, think about it, and we'll talk about it some more.
All righty.
Thank you.
Department heads? Is there a, Jill?
I'm happy to report that our audit is complete. Our auditors will be coming, hopefully by April the 9th, the next agenda, to present that, hopefully. He's gotta check his schedule.
Put that on the council agenda as a supposed to work session for that.
So, just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, anything from you?
We have a new purchasing manager.
Oh, okay. Is that who's sitting near left? I wonder who that was with that badge on back there?
She or he.
Sure. Michael, we're going to make you introduce yourself.
I was going to introduce you during the, uh, mayor notes, but definitely excited that she's here.
Um, my name is Gillian Saffel, so, new purchasing manager.
Okay.
On week two.
All right. Well, thank you for introducing yourself, Gillian.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne, nothing? Chief?
No.
Okay. Joe? Richard, nothing else?
Too much time.
Lynn, nothing?
I'm going to brag about our marina manager.
Come up here and brag.
I'm going to come up and brag.
For everything that we've been doing down at the marina, Drew's been doing it, and he recently, last week, got a thank you note from one of our long-term slipholders, not a liveaboard, but somebody who's there all the time, boat's there all the time, and thanking him for all the things that he's been doing down there at the marina, the way it's shaping up. He took over, um, I know you're familiar with the hangout area, he's strung lights there, he's changed it up, he's made it much nicer, because that's where everybody gathers together and has dinner in the evening.
When do we need to start advertising so that the loopers know that we have at least fuel, uh, you know, this fall?
We're going to do that very soon, as soon as we, that day we open up for fuel. Uh, we have contacts with all of the, um, the captain, the waterways, and all, all of those, um, we will contact them immediately and let them know that we are now, uh, in the business of fueling boats, and they'll get it into their publications, and they'll put out their kind of e-blasts to let everybody know. And I have a direct contact to the loopers, and I'll let her know as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, is that.
Thank you, Drew.
It's just that we keep getting a lot of bad news, it's time for some good news.
All right. Well, let's go through the agenda quickly. Nothing, uh, nothing too earth-shattering on there. Uh, 5, 6, 7, 8, uh, 5, 6, 7, 8. Wayne, if we have any questions on that, is he still up? Where'd he go?
He's got that.
I think that that would be, I think that would be Wayne. Counsel, stop me if you want to ask, uh, staff or the mayor any details about any of these. Uh, number nine, yeah, I can handle that. Number 10, who would, uh, we ask questions, uh, for number 10? The title, six program?
I can probably answer it.
Okay. Is just a formality, correct?
We have to do this every three months, every 30 years.
Okay.